Oh, what's it done? Oh, God damn it. No, I'm gonna be walking around. Bob, how you doing? You're on mute, Bob. I think there's some confusion, though. This is the prebid for the operations contractor. The RCT board meeting is at five o'clock. Hi, Ray.
Hey.
Yeah, I apologize. I think it's probably because you guys are used to getting the invites just for the board meetings. And I think the perhaps the county IT people use the same mailing list for this as well. But this meeting here that's about to start right now is for our operations contractors. It's a prebid meeting, so it's not really for the board members, although you're welcome to stay on if you want. But the meeting is still on at five o'clock for us, 5:15, actually.
Okay, so if I get off then, I was invited, so.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I didn't see the guest list from County IT, but I bet they thought it was a regular board member meetings. They probably sent it. Apparently Bob was on and who knows.
That's something about a grant meeting or something, so.
Yeah, it's a prebid meeting for the for the RFP that we're going to talk about at five o'clock that we're releasing. This is a meeting to tell everybody about it and just chit chat. So you're welcome to stay on if you want. It wouldn't hurt, but you certainly don't. It was a mix up. You weren't supposed to be on the invite list.
Well, if it's okay, I have about a million things to do. I'll see you at 5:15.
All right, I'll let you do it. But yeah, come on back with the other link. So you should have got two links.
I did.
Yeah, come back with the other one at five.
Okay, I'll see you guys then.
Thank you, Ray. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
How embarrassing.
No problem.
All right, see you at five.
Okay. I don't know how to leave.
Bob, I couldn't hear you. You were on mute earlier, but I hope you heard us. This one was a it was a miscommunication. This one's not the board meeting. They must have invited the board anyway, but yeah, you don't need to stay on if you don't have to. This is a prebid meeting with the operations contractors that are interested in bidding our RFP for ops and maintenance. So anyway. Ah, this wonderful world we're in. Okay, so recording is on. Fernando, Nick, hello, Mark, hi. Dan, good to see you. Nick or Fernando, is anyone there in person for the prebid?
No one is here in person as of yet.
As of yet. Okay, thank you. Let me know if anyone does arrive in person.
Yes, sir.
All right, we got some folks. Let me let me get them set up so they can speak. Okay, it looks like they're set up where they can speak. Good. All right, welcome, everybody. Let's see here. I will go ahead and at some point I'll go ahead and show the screen and then we'll do introduction. I'll take it off the screen for that. This is my first ever virtual prebid, so bear with me, man. I never thought we'd see the day where we do it this way, but this is kind of cool, especially as remote as we are in Crescent City. This is actually the way to go. Okay, so sorry about the little late start. We had a mix up in the IT folks invited the board members as well as the folks that are interested in this project and this procurement. So we're going to do introductions. It's going to be a brief meeting. We all got important things to do. I bet we're done in a half an hour or so. We're going to go through introductions. I'll do a little spiel on the background of the agency and what some of our goals are on the procurement. We'll look at the schedule real quick and then talk about the official, the question submittal procedure because it's all via email this year so that I can answer everybody and that nobody gets left out of any information. Then we're going to play a little video. We had a drone footage for it was for a grant, but it actually comes in great for today. So we actually had a drone and we're out there taking, having a look at our yard. So that'll give you a look at the exterior of the facility. If it plays, if technology is my friend today. And then our onsite folks Fernando and Nick will give you a little walking tour through the magic of their phones of the facility and then we'll be done. So without any further ado, I'll start the introductions and stop the shares. We can all see each other better. My name's Joe Rye and myself along with Dan Herron, co-partner, the management side of our CTA. So our CTA is a virtual transit agency in the respect that we're not employees either. Dan and I are contractors. We have a contract to manage and basically be the agency. And then the biggest contract we oversee is this one here that we're talking about today. So Dan, why don't you go next?
I'm Dan Herron. I helped Joe with mostly proposal, proposaling and some of the reports and support him on any other issues that he's got.
And Dan and I have been, in case that comes up, we've been doing this here for RCA for a little over five years. So five years ago, April, I think it was. All right, next in line, let's go with some of our incumbent contractor staff. We've got several folks from First Transit. Why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourself?
I am Fernando. I am the acting general manager at First Transit at the location.
Thank you, Fernando. Nick?
I'm Nick West. I'm the tech in charge for the facility. I do everything from vehicle maintenance to facilities maintenance.
And he does it well. Thanks, Nick.
I'm Mark Elias. I'm the region vice president for First Transit in the Northwest.
Thank you, Mark.
Joe, did you want the rest of us?
Yep.
All right, Dave Smith, Director Business Development, First Transit.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, I think that's it for First Transit. At this point, just please, any order you want to go and just introduce yourself and who you're with.
Hi, I'm Lance Guy. I'm the West Coast Sales Rep with MTM Transit.
Thank you, Lance. Welcome.
Steven Fernandez, Vice President for Store Transit Systems.
Thank you, Steven.
Hi, I'm Amy Ritchie, also with MTM Transit, the proposal director.
Thank you, Amy. Welcome. JT, are you there?
I'm here, but I don't see my this isn't acting the way normal other video conferences I've been in are acting. So I can't. Can you see me? I can't see me.
I can see a nice picture of you. Yep, in your suit and tie. I don't see a live camera picture.
Oh, is that my daughter's wedding? That thing is up. Okay, well, that works.
Yeah, that one's up.
I thought it looked sharp.
Dave Smith, he looks about the same. He's got his suit. He's got his profile picture in there.
Oh, I guess that works. So you can hear me, though, right?
Yeah, okay, great.
I'm the Business Development Manager and the DBE Liaison Officer for Parrot Transit Service.
All right, welcome, JT. Thank you. I think that's it. Anyone that didn't get a chance to check in. Okay, well, let's jump into the agenda then and we will get started. I'm going to put it back on the screen just so I can remember what it looks like because it's been one of those days. Our CTA, a little background in the information, you guys know quite probably as much or more than I do about it. But the agency is about 20 years old or so. No, probably 25 years old or so. No, no, it's closer to 20. The building itself that that is occupied, we provide the buildings owned by RCA. We're on a land lease with the Fair, Donart County Fairgrounds. So we're actually near the end of the first 20 years of that land lease. And I think the agency started a few years before that. So we're probably in the 20 to 25 year old range. The facility was built in '04, so it's 18 years old. So we intend to renew the lease most likely for another 20 years or so. And that's our home. So the agency, like most in California, our funding is reliant heavily on the Transportation Development Act, which is a statewide sales tax on, you know, durable goods that is returned to two counties via population formula. So that's most of our money, but then we also tap as many federal and state sources as are out there as well. So we get some 5311, which is your FTA rural areas money. And we get some 50 we apply for and we usually get some 5311 out, but that's competitive and that's not guaranteed. But that's your inner city, regional inner city rural funding that we used that powers the Route 20, which is our main intercity regional road. We get to get some 5310 money that we're using for dollar ride vehicle replacement. And we're getting some 5339 money. Both of those are competitive, though, so it's not like a guaranteed formula fund. And we use those for bus replacements. So yeah, basically, we try to use as much of the local money for operations as possible. The transit system is running five days a week today. That that started, it was six days a week for many, many years until the pandemic hit in spring of 2020. And then we reduced service to five days a week, both for reduced, you know, to address and right size it with reduced demand, but also because we, you know, we feared and rightfully so, a shortage of drivers and some issues with that. So we haven't had, we haven't missed any service. It's been a challenge all the way, but we reduced service significantly by about a third in April, early April 2020. And, you know, not knowing how generous and aggressive the federal government was going to try to intervene to support transit, which was awesome. So this summer, summer '21, the board authorized reinstating about half of that service that we cut. So we're in the process of doing that. So starting on October 9th, we're restoring most of the Saturday service that was cut. So we'll be back to six days a week. Where, you know, we restored our school tripper, the Route 300. That started a month ago when schools started. The some of the other stuff, though, has not come back and quite frankly, probably will never probably bring back all those hours that we had before, because we were already even before the pandemic, we were looking at how we could trim ourselves back to allow for increased labor costs and fuel costs and stuff that were pressuring us from inside. So we think we're going to be about at the right size come mid-October this year. We will still have one trip that we might want to bring back to on the Arcata de Crescent City segment of the 20, so that might come next, next year perhaps. But we'll see. So, you know, obviously, the pandemic hit us hard. Ridership dropped by 50 or 60% right away and hasn't really come back. It's crept up a little, but it has not come back to pre-pandemic levels yet. Um, the go into the RFP, we have a new baseline hours, which assumes the hours we're putting back into the service in a couple of weeks. So that's basically the baseline level that we're going to ask all the proposers to bid on. So that means we'll might expand a little bit beyond that or contract a little, but that's going to be kind of our normal. Unless something major changes in the world of transit funding, which it could, you know. It's been a very volatile 20 years or so, so we've all seen the ups and downs of that for the funding. Our goals in this procurement are to, you know, get the best, make sure that our local team is taken care of. So improving our wages is huge and you'll see that clearly, hopefully in the RFP. One of the things we've done since the pandemic hit is in two chunks, we've added hazard pay to the table to all the hourly employees. So now they're getting four bucks an hour in hazard pay on top of the bid amount that they were receiving it such to receive any help. So that's been helpful and we don't want to go back on that. So all bids will have to, they're bidding on the current pay level, which includes that. So you'll see the table towards the back of the first part of the RFP. And that's pretty clear that, you know, the bidding has to start there. It can go up, but it can't go under that. Ditto with our general manager position. We think it needs to be bumped up a bit. It's a super, you know, as remote as we are, one of the themes of the project is we're so far away from everybody else that it's very important that we, you know, take good care of our local style. Any questions on like the background of the agency, recent history or the goals of the RFP? Okay, well, let's move along then. Next session, looking at the schedule. So let me get that pulled up here. Okay. Whoops, I had it. All right, here we go. Let me share that screen. Here we go. Okay, you should see a PDF up there from the RFP. So today, this afternoon, our board is going to approve the release of the RFP, hopefully at their meeting this afternoon at 5:15. Today, we're right now, we're doing the pre-proposal conference. So these milestones are being met on time. The one thing that's out there, we're not going to let it delay the process, hopefully. But Caltrans still hasn't officially approved the RFP. They've been working on it for a couple of weeks. So hopefully any day now, they will. I'll check in with them to try to poke them and get that loose. But so if there's any any significant changes, we'll handle that with an addendum shortly. Other than that, the last day for submission of questions, which we're requesting are all submitted via email, please. So we have a written record of them. That'll be October 7th. And then we'll issue an addenda to respond to all those questions on the 11th of October. So that's that's a week from, two weeks from today. And then proposals are due two weeks after that. So that will be four weeks from today on October 25th, 5:00 PM. And we're receiving, we're requiring at this point, both written in print copies, old school, and then also an electronic version submitted via email, please. That's kind of the schedule. Then after that point, we'll have a selection committee, board members, other community leaders and myself. That'll come up with a recommendation and then the board will be, there could be some Baffo stuff most likely happening in mid-November and then we're slated. This could change a little. The date we have for the board meeting to award the contracts currently, the 22nd of November. So and then the starting point for the new contract is January 1st, 2022. So I know it's a little tight, but we wanted to give a little more time upfront to put proposals together and sort of at the expense of the transition time. And yeah, any questions about or comments about the timeline for the milestone? You guys are the best audience ever. I love you guys. Okay. Stop sharing on that. So then we get into the finer part of the preview. So we have, so yeah, let's go over real quick and then we'll do the, I'll try to get this video to play that I've been waiting all day to play for you guys. We want all the questions submitted by email. I mean, the old days of walking around the yard and all the micro conversations. It was fun and all, but this will be a lot more orderly, especially being as we're mostly doing this remotely. So all questions by email to me at tmtpconsulting@gmail.com by October 7th, 5:00 PM. And then I'll compile them all and try to get them answered within, turn them around, hopefully within four days if they're not. If there's something that's still hanging out there, we'll mention that in the first addenda, but we'll get the first addenda released on the 11th. And then hopefully there won't be too much after that. Any questions about the submitting of questions? Any questions about the question? Okay, so we're going to try to play a little video here. See how this works. This was a, this shows what our facility looks like. So again, we leased a corner, kind of, you call it a corner. Yeah, one corner of the fairgrounds property here in Crescent City. We have the ground lease and we built the facility on it. And yeah, see if I can get this to play. Give me one second. All right, got it. That's, that's the hard part. Got it. Got it. I'll find a way to share it. I got too much stuff open. I apologize. Oh, this is bad. I was afraid this might happen. Where is mine? Why is it not seeing the little video?
Well, Joe is working on the, on the video. If we can't get it running here, we can probably link it.
Yeah.
So you really won't miss that, but it's the exciting part.
You know, this was going to be the highlight of the show. Maybe this is it. Let me know if you guys can see those. It's locking up on me. This isn't good. Okay, well, we are not having luck with our drone day. So we'll get it uploaded. It gives an overview of the outside of the facility. It's kind of cool and all, but we will jump to Fernando and Nick are going to show us around the inside of the building a little bit. Hopefully that technology works a little bit better than this one did. Fernando, are you and Nick ready to, you want to go first and show the office area or?
Yeah, I'll go first, Joe.
Okay, so I stopped sharing. See if you can. All right, good. I can see you.
So this is the general manager's office right here. We got our big old map of Crescent City there with all the codes. It's probably a little blurry, Joe. Can you guys let me know if it is?
It's not bad.
Okay, so walking out of my office, you got the front entrance here. Then you got the safety manager's office here. Relatively small. And as we walk down the hall, we have our restroom, our printing room. This is our printer. This is where we count money. And then we have surveillance that watches the money counting here. And we have dispatching. Our keys. Our dispatcher, Elaine. And the restroom. Walking towards the break room here. Turn on the lights here. There we go. Conference table, conference TV. And then we have our daily trip sheets for the drivers and then the information for the drivers that we want to get to them there. The driver's lockers for a stage box, a little mini kitchen, microwave and refrigerator for the drivers and water. And as we walk out to this door, we have maintenance. And I'll let Nick take over from here.
Thanks, Fernando. That was good. That worked a lot better than my video. There he is. Hey, Nick.
Afternoon. Trying to use my video here. That lets us. All right.
There you go.
We do a pretty good job trying to keep things organized here. As you can see, we keep all the nuts and bolts and all that kind of stuff up in the front of the shop. Work benches, grinders. Some of this is my personal stuff. Other stuff belongs to the company. I'm currently working on a list of company-owned shop equipment that's supposed to be one of the appendixes for the RFP. I have the list. I'm just trying to get it into Excel format. Now, this is the main maintenance area. Out here is our parking area. Some of this is storage for agency-owned property. And rest of it is area for me to do maintenance, longer-term projects like engines and transmissions. And then in here is the parts room and administrative or my desk. It's constantly in a state of rearranging and organizing and constantly improving.
And then I'll go ahead and come back outside. And then I'll go ahead and come back outside. And show you guys the buses and how we have the buses situated in the parking lot here.
Thanks Nick.
So the employee.
Raining Fernando?
Yeah, it's raining today, yes.
Unbelievable.
Yup. Well, I'll just go ahead and walk around the facility here. Take you out to the wash bay.
Yellord County uh, has the highest rainfall of any county in California and may want to note that.
You know?
Well, here we have our wash bay.
It's somewhere in California is getting some rain.
Yeah, we really need it in ready, no. So this does have an oil separator in it. That was installed back in twenty-fifteen so that we could separate the oil. Right here. And then. The back. Of the office. And the exit. We'll just walk back in through the back door over here. We have our parking for our PM driver and our PM dispatcher here, next to the back door. Also have an emergency exit for the shop. And our used oil storage and antifreeze. And we back, walk back into the door.
Thank you Fernando. Looks like, oh, there we go. We locked up for a minute. Okay, and uh, well, thank you for the tour Fernando and uh, we will, one of the things in the peer review. Um, RFP, we hadn't finalized yet the list that Nick mentioned too. We're working on. The list of uh, which equipments RCA, our CTA provides versus, you know, everything else, then you can do the math. Everything else is provided by the current contractor. So it's a mix. Any questions uh, at all before we wrap up? I think that was the, the last item on the uh, docket officially. Um, but if there's anything else to discuss, we've got time. Otherwise, I'll let you guys get on with your day.
Joe, are the employees part of a labor union?
Negative.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, well, that was it. So um, if you, obviously the best way to reach me, because I, I forgot to mention, but even um. Dan and I are part-time, so usually the best way to get me is through email, then I can get, get back to you as soon as possible as it fits my schedule around some other commitments. Um, so send me any questions you might have, uh, via email. Um, if they're official questions, you, you know, need to be in the uh, addenda, I will, um, you know, pause on answering those. Or I mean, I'll. Uh, the, the answers to those will be included in the official addenda on October eleventh. Um, but if you have any like questions, just more like process or something you forgot to ask, that's probably not germane to everybody, I can respond quicker.
All right, thanks Joe.
Anything else for uh, for the uh, group or otherwise, um, I thank everyone for attending. Let me quickly take attendance here real quick. You guys have been great, albeit a quiet audience. You guys have been awesome. Let me jot that. Fernando, anything we forgot to mention or anything you want to show real quick? Did you show them the uh, money count room?
Yeah, that was the one room I showed with the surveillance camera.
Okay, oh, that's right, that's right. Uh, maybe talk a little about the gates. We do have gated automatic gate access, so that's been a big help as far as our security.
Yeah, the gates basically prevented anybody from coming in and stealing thirty thousand dollars worth of camera systems again.
Which they did, they did a few years ago.
Yeah, back in twenty thirteen, fourteen.
Yup, so that's been good. We used, um, we had a flurry when we took over five or six years ago. We had quite a bit of security money from the old property. So we, we used quite a bit of that to shore up our security. You also have a closed-circuit camera system there at the yard, right Fernando?
That is correct, with about twelve cameras facing every direction of the office. So we can see any intruders coming in. Or out.
Nice. All right, any uh, any other questions? Okay, thank you guys very much and uh, we look forward to proposals. Thanks everyone.
Take care, Joe. Thanks a lot.
Yup, have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Nick and Fernando.
Appreciate it, Joe.
Thanks guys. Good job Nick and Fernando.
You're welcome. Have a great day. We'll see you at five.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.